Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's get started with our meeting. Thank you for coming to St. Charles County Council's meeting tonight. We'll get started with an invocation from Bill Sontag with Harvester Christian Church. Could you please stand?
May I ask the gentleman to remove their hats? It'd be nice. Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, I just want to begin by thanking you for being a God that loves, and a God that cares, and a God that wants to be part of all of our lives, Father. Father, I pray for wisdom for this council. I pray for strength for this council. I pray for our country, our state, our county, and each individual municipality that is within our country, Father. I pray that all of us would look to you. I pray that we would look for you for that strength, for that wisdom, and for the ability to see beyond ourselves, Father, to lead out of a perspective of knowing who you are, Father. So just help us to do that. Help us to see you. Help us to grow closer to you, Father. But more importantly, Father God, let us always know that you're a loving God, a caring God, a God that stands with arms wide open, waiting for us to come to Him. So allow us to do that. Allow us to see past ourselves, to serve the greater good, and to serve the people of this city, this county, this state, and this world, to the best of our ability, and to the best ability of this council, and to the best of everyone who hears my voice today, Father. I pray all this in your blessed Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Roll call.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum. Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander. Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
We have a motion to amend the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and bring up table bills.
Bring up the table bill. Forty-seven oh eight.
I second the motion to bring up table bills.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Sharman Yule, would you like to come up? And then you can sit right here, please.
We'll need a motion to remove it from the table.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's hear the bill.
I'll read the bill. Bill number forty-seven oh eight, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the agreement with the Northeast Community Action Corporation, NICAC, to act as grant subrecipient in managing housing choice vouchers assigned to the St. Charles County Housing Assistance Program.
Any questions or comments on forty-seven oh eight? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the agreement with Northeast Community Action Corporation, NICAC, to act as grant subrecipient in managing housing choice vouchers assigned to the St. Charles County Housing Assistance Program. Commissioner Yule.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
The bill has passed. Thank you, Ms. Yule. We appreciate your service.
You can stay up here now if you want. People might yell at us.
That's a nice seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the regular agenda, we are now move on to public presentation. Anybody like to have a... Oh, no, do we have public presentation?
Yes, we, on your agenda, you'll see Charles Hadau Senior Fellow on Public Policy with the American Kratom Association.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just sort of by understand, we moved the work session to what date?
May twenty-eighth.
May twenty-eighth.
Tuesday.
And Charles, we did notify him and let him know that we're moving the work session, but he made special arrangements to come to this meeting, so he wanted the opportunity to speak, so we didn't want to tell him he couldn't speak. I guess, is that how it happened? Okay, sir.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to address you today about this very important issue. I'm here because this kratom issue has become controversial, not just here in St. Charles County, by the way. It was first made controversial in two thousand and twelve, when the FDA determined that after hearing about a cluster of nine deaths that occurred in Sweden in a twelve-month period, that were attributed to the ingestion of a powdered kratom product called Krypton. And that, of course, set alarm bells ringing with all public health officials, including the FDA. And so they determined that they were going to impose an import ban and to alert public safety officials and law enforcement officials across the country, claiming that kratom was an opioid. That was the first claim that they made, much like classic opioids, they had the same opioid effects, that it was dangerously addictive, and that therefore posed a public health threat to the American public. And finally, they determined that it was killing people. And of course, those nine deaths were sort of the precursor to a continued examination that was done by the FDA. And then in two thousand and sixteen, in that four-year period, they filled the pipeline of information to states and local governments, resulting in six states banning kratom entirely. But in two thousand and twelve, I'm sorry, in two thousand and sixteen, the FDA then submitted a recommendation to the Drug Enforcement Administration to ban kratom and make it a Schedule One substance. Now, that was an important event, because in order to justify scheduling, they had to prove what they had said, that it was, in fact, an opioid, that therefore it had no legitimate medical use, that it was dangerously addictive, and that it was unsafe and killing people. There are other factors that play into the decision by the Drug Enforcement Administration pursuant to the Controlled Substances Act, but those are the key factors they had to prove. And what they ran into was a very stiff opposition of people who spoke up. Initially, about sixty-eight hundred people spoke and said, they're wrong on the science, and they're wrong on the effects that it has on people. A hundred and forty thousand people signed a petition to the White House, saying that they should not ban kratom. There were fifty-one members of the US House of Representatives, twenty-five Republicans and twenty-six Democrats, thirteen members of the US Senate who opposed the ban, and they, just to give you an idea of this spectrum that it fell on, Bernie Sanders on one hand and Orrin Hatch on the other. It showed you that there's bipartisan opposition to it. The DEA, for the first time in eighty-two recommendations to schedule a substance under that section of the Controlled Substances Act, rejected, for the first time in American history, rejected that recommendation, and said to the FDA, return back with what's called a full eight-factor analysis to prove more conclusively the claims that you were making. That eight-factor analysis is the standard that is required for documentation that would justify a scheduling decision. They then invited public comment. Twenty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-two comments were submitted to the DEA, unprecedented. Ninety-nine point one percent were in favor. You had a broad array of people, veterans, law enforcement officials, medical professionals, and the average American that uses kratom, spoke out against this ban. The American Kratom Association then retained one of the preeminent scientists in the world about substance abuse and the harm substances can have to do an eight-factor analysis, Dr. Jack Henningfield. Dr. Henningfield had worked for the National Institutes on Drug Abuse for twenty years, and he had done multiple eight-factor analyses. He did one, independent of what the FDA was doing, but mirrored exactly what the requirements were, and his conclusion, as submitted to the Drug Enforcement Administration, was that this is a substance that was not schedulable, that in fact, it did not meet the criteria that was required in order to justify its scheduling. The FDA was asked by the DEA to submit their eight-factor analysis by the same deadline of December first of two thousand and sixteen. They failed to do so. Then in the intervening time, after two thousand and sixteen, when the challenge was clear for them to prove their claims, they finally submitted their eight-factor analysis on October seventeenth of two thousand and seventeen. Now, when they submitted that, they also did a number of public pronouncements. First, they said that kratom had killed forty-four people. We asked, as an organization, for the, under the FOIA statutes, for documentation on each one of those. We then submitted that death data to an independent PhD microbiologist who looked at each one of those deaths, and at the end of that analysis determined that every one of them was actually attributable to either to poly-drug use or to adulterated kratom products. There was only one that could not be identified as one way or the other, because there wasn't sufficient medical records for anyone to make a conclusion, including the FDA. When the National Institute of Drug Abuse saw that analysis, they undertook their own analysis of those forty-four deaths. By the way, those forty-four deaths were over a five-year period globally. They were not just in the United States. And when you look at the statistical significance, that was unprecedented, too. Why would you have to look globally? Why would you have to look over a five-year period if this was truly a dangerous substance? From a statistical standpoint, it just didn't measure up. The National Institutes of Drug Abuse did their own independent analysis, and they concluded in a publication of their website on September twentieth of two thousand and eighteen, that in fact, they were all poly-drug use or adulterated kratom products, that the pure kratom product does not kill you. The claim that the kratom is an opioid, and Dr. Gottlieb, the commissioner of the FDA, and you should be able to believe the commissioner of the FDA. If he says something, you should take it to the bank. But in fact, when he said it was an opioid, he was wrong, because it hits the same MU opioid receptor in your brain. It does do that. Well-recognized for decades that that's the fact. But what it doesn't do is have the same effect as a classic opioid like morphine or heroin, where it goes to your respiratory system. And all of the deaths that are attributable to the opioid crisis that we face today are from overdoses that literally suffocate the victim, because it hits their respiratory system, and that's what causes the deaths. Kratom doesn't do that. It's what's called a partial agonist. I was asked by a legislator up in Wisconsin, well, what other kind of substances hit the MU opioid receptor in the brain? Well, St. John's Wort does. Naloxone, which is the antidote to an opioid overdose, hits that same receptor, and cheese. Cheese hits it, too. There's been studies done, peer-reviewed studies, about how that's why people have this craving for cheese, because it hits that nerve center in your brain, and the same one that the opioids hit. So just saying that it hits the MU opioid receptor is not a basis to make a scientific conclusion that would justify scheduling. So then the next question is, is it dangerously addictive? That's an important question, because you can, in fact, be, become addicted to some substances, and if you ingest too much of it because you're addicted, then there's a problem. The National Institutes of Drug Abuse commissioned two studies and funded them. One was published in June of two thousand and eighteen, called the HEMBE Study. What they found is that there is no addiction liability at all to kratom's alkaloids, mitrogyny and seven-hydroxymitrogyny. They did say that if seven-hydroxymitrogyny occurred in a higher level in the natural plant, that it could become a problem. And that's where the adulteration occurs, when they try to elevate the naturally occurring levels of the alkaloids, and so you'll see some bad actors that have seven-hydroxymitrogyny levels that are spiked way high, and that becomes a dangerous product. We want to ban that kind of activity, and we hope that you'll adopt that framework as well. The second study was an intramural NIDA study, concluded the same thing. They said no addiction liability, but they found something even more important. They said that the animals, the rats that were used in that study, it actually reduced their cravings for morphine. So what NIDA concluded was not that this ought to be banned, but rather, it ought to be studied more. And so they issued a grant to the University of Florida in December of two thousand and eighteen for three-point-five million dollars to look at that issue. They now have three more grants, they're in the pipeline, that will do the same thing. So what we have today is the FDA, which you're acting upon, the information that was provided, and you acting in good faith, are relying on bad information that the FDA can't even convince the DEA to schedule kratom and to ban it. Today, the DEA's had the FDA recommendation for over a year and a half. Usually, they take about three months to make a decision, and the outlier, six months. A year and a half, and they're unwilling, the DEA's unwilling to move. Congress is acting, states are acting, to put a regulatory framework around kratom, and that's what we hope you will consider doing. We have a bill in the Missouri Legislature, similar to what's passed in Utah, Georgia, and Arizona. We have it in a dozen other states that are being actively considered right now. We think that's the best approach to protect the freedom that individual consumers can have to use a safe product. It's been used for centuries in Southeast Asia. At a NIDA conference in California last year, they invited scientists from Malaysia, Thailand, and Indonesia, all reported there has not been a single death, centuries of use, not a single death that can be attributed to kratom. We did it here because we allowed it to be adulterated. We did it because of the economic exploitation of those who want to get money by making the product more difficult, they have a high, give you a higher, include opioids. All of the adulterants are fentanyl, morphine, and heroin. We think that needs to be banned, that's the correct way to do it. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Glad to answer any questions, if you have, any, before I leave.
Yes, go ahead.
I've read a lot I can read on this, and I think it's important to note that you mentioned NIDA and National Institute for Drug Abuse. That's actually a branch of the National Institute for Health.
That's correct.
It's a federal entity as well. And from what I've read that report, and it looks, they're saying that, yes, they are therapeutic, possible therapeutic advantages of that, and they don't sound the alarm like the FDA. It looks to me like there's two different federal entities with two different opinions in this product. But I think, one thing I want to point out is that NIDA is a division of the National Institute of Health, that's a federal entity, so we've got conflicting federal opinions on this. Secondly, I want to ask you, Representative Christopher Nali's bill, okay? Are you good with that as way that's wrote? Do you think that bill, I've read that as well, and it looks to me like he's trying to cut out the bad apples, right?
It's an excellent, excellent piece of legislation, that if you could model, with your authority, model here in the county is a perfect way to do it. We represent consumers, so we want to protect consumers from getting the bad stuff, and right now, the bad stuff is rampant. If you ban it, it makes the black market rife with this stuff. I mean, people will just be buying it on the internet, and there won't be any outlet for safe kratom products.
Okay, what, I'm going to ask you to speculate, and that's always dangerous, but why do you think the FDA has taken such a diametrically opposed view than what you've laid out? I mean, the information you provided us today is very good, and I trust everything you've said, but why is the FDA, in your opinion, taking such a different view on this particular substance?
Well, from the benefit of my personal experience, I've worked, I worked as the chief of staff at HHS, and in the early eighties, and I saw the aggressive regulatory scheme that the FDA wanted to have in effect in the dietary supplement industry. I left HHS, that came to a head in the early nineties, when the FDA said about dietary supplements and vitamins, the very same narrative that you were hearing today, that it was killing people. And by the way, they were right, there were some bad actors in the dietary supplement industry that were producing products, again, for economic advantage, to give you a little bit of boost or better effect, and ended up killing people. And so what the FDA's solution was, ban it entirely, and then make everything go through the new drug approval process. Congress stepped in, and they said, in the nineteen ninety-four, the Dietary Supplement Health and Safety Education Act, the DSHA Act, they said that dietary supplements can be regulated by the FDA. And that's the way, they set up a regulatory regimen, which we want the FDA to do today with kratom. So we think that's the better way to do it. Why they persist in this, I think the other factor is that the opioid crisis overwhelmed them. And when they started to see the effects of this crisis in two thousand and twelve through two thousand and sixteen, the President's Commission on Opioid Abuse nailed it and said that the FDA simply missed the ball completely, that they were derelict in their duty in the opioid crisis. And I think they're scrambling to find scapegoats, and kratom was an easy one, because they thought that it was an opioid, they thought it was killing people, and it was a way to show the flag that they were doing good work. They were wrong on the science. And the new science that's out there, since they, you know, they put in their eight-factor analysis, shows that it's not addictive, it's not dangerously addictive, and that it doesn't have the opioid effects, and in fact, it can help the opioid crisis. So you'd think the FDA would just withdraw their application and start to work with us. They're just obstinate, they're not willing to do it.
I got a question. Just so everybody knows out there, that all these council members up here knew nothing of this ban. It just came out on Thursday, maybe, and so I'm just pointing that out, that we got a lot of emails, and a lot of like angry emails, but we weren't aware of this, nor, I'm not saying we're in favor or against it, but this is a good start. So that's, just so everybody knows that. I mean, this was not brought on by this legislative body whatsoever. When you made one comment, and again, we're going to have a work session on this, so we weren't really supposed to get really deep into this, but you said forty-four deaths. You said it a couple of times, forty-four deaths in multiple years, is that?
Five years globally. Now, there-
Is that's all the association? I mean, I'm not saying that that's-
And most all those people had other drugs in their system.
So it's forty-four deaths in multiple years that they can account, or potentially say, and that's it?
I'm just as incredulous as you are from a statistical standpoint, but yes. Now, just to give you an illustration, one of those was a gunshot wound to the chest. The person died of the gunshot wound, and because the FDA found that that individual had used kratom within approximate time of the death, they determined to be a kratom-associated death. They had another young man who had bipolar disease through his whole life, hung himself, and happened to have, and all these people had multiple drugs in their system, by the way, and they called that a kratom-associated death. A man in Germany jumped out of a window, broke his arm, had severe internal injuries, refused treatment because he was high from dangerous drugs, went in and died, he had taken a kratom tea. That's the sum and substance of it. Now, to be fair, there have been additional deaths that have been recorded that medical examiners and coroners around the country are saying are kratom-associated deaths, just like the FDA. So the Centers for Disease Control just released a study a couple of weeks ago, where they identified ninety more, so the total's around one thirty, one forty, one fifty. But what the CDC report said was that when you look at it, what they're finding is that the coroners and medical examiners are not, don't have the analytical equipment to look at the deaths, to determine what the true nature of the substances are, because of resource problems. And so when they tested them, they found that even the ones that were kratom-only, that's what medical examiners and coroners would say, they looked at every one, and they found that they were all multiple-drug use, poly-drug use, with the exception of one where there was no blood available to do the test. So this number shrinks down in terms of actual kratom-caused deaths to zero. That's the problem. It's this association or kratom detection that doesn't speak to what really caused the death.
Right over the weekend, that there was somewhere in the neighborhood of five-hundred-and-fifty, five-forty-five, something like that, of deaths attributed to ibuprofen, or Tylenol, which happens, whenever I can't sleep, I take a Tylenol PM. So I kind of went down that road when I started doing this, and I found out that the number of calls to poison control is measured in the tens of thousands, and then we had somewhere in the five-hundred-and-fifty range of people die from it. I just, I'm trying to figure out why the emphasis on kratom versus other substances that are out there and do a lot of good things, but no one is calling for the ban of those.
I guess, though, hold on, Charles, I think, dude, we want to have this, because it's turning us to the-
No.
Well, they didn't have their witness coming, because we said that we were going to not have a whole lot of debate. I'm just, it's up to you guys.
What I could offer is that-
All right, I mean, it's one-sided, because they didn't have Dr. Case show up.
What I can just offer to you, Dave Herman-
I'll ask the same question next week.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know.
Dave Herman, the president of the American Kratom Association, plans to attend the work session, so he'll bring data. You will be surprised at the data. It's worse than you think, in terms of the comparative data about why we should be more concerned about other things, like ibuprofen NSA's. It's astounding when you look at those numbers. But we'll bring that data to you at the work session, so you can review it.
Thank you.
I have one thing. I'd like to thank everybody, every citizen of this county, that this is an important issue, too, that reached out to contact us, and a lot of you sent us information. I read everything you sent. I even went to my local kratom CBGD store, or whatever, and talked to the folks in there.
You're one of the worst.
I went in there, and it was a table that looked like a GNC, it was a real fancy, real nice store. I talked to the folks in there, and they told me senior citizens like me were their biggest customers, because all the aches and pains you get-
Chronic pain, arthritis, yes.
I appreciate the information, and, but I wanted to know, we got kind of blindsided about this, you know, so this wasn't our idea, okay? We're doing what we should do, we're digging into it, we're listening to you guys, and hopefully, we'll come up with a good decision.
Could I just close and tell you that, as I've gone around the country and seen witnesses testify at various hearings in legislatures, some of them are passionate, and some of them say things they probably shouldn't say, and maybe an email's an easy way to do it, and we apologize for those that maybe were overly exuberant about it, but it means a lot to people, that it's saving their lives, and you'll hear at your work session, those experiences, it is saving people's lives, because they're getting off of dangerous opioids and onto something that really can protect them. So thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments. Now, we have public comments, whoever would like to talk on any subject. Once you get on that subject, we'll stick on that subject with three in favor and three opposed. You were supposed to fill out a speaker's card. Claire, who is the first speaker?
I have six, and they're all against kratom. So I'll call the first speaker.
They're against kratom, or-
The ban, sorry.
Okay.
Against the kratom ban. Sorry. And the first speaker is Danny Foster.
Hey, how you fellows doing tonight?
Good.
I got thrown on the spot here, but I own a Kava bar down here on Main Street, so I'm here representing probably, I mean, hundreds, if not thousands, of people who come in on a weekly basis, and they drink our kratom teas down there. I don't have all the scientific facts behind it, but I do have a heart that I've been down there serving the kratom to people for over a year now. And I'll just tell you a little story about me. I had twenty years of sobriety, and I had had a relapse in alcohol, and I hit around forty, just thought, you know, I was grown, I had a gutter company and stuff, I was just going to lay back and let it grow. Well, ended up, ended up blacking out two to three nights a week, that alcohol just had me spun out, and then I ended up sobering up. Couple of weeks later, I was down in my basement, just Googled up alternatives to alcohol, and Kava came up. So then, we started, I kind of got into Kava, and then kratom and Kava kind of go hand-in-hand. I don't know if you've went up and down Main Street and seen the sign down there in the window, but I started enjoying the relaxing properties myself of both the kratom and the Kava, and we ended up opening up the Kava bar down there. And what I would like to talk about is how we percolate out the kratom down there, that people aren't ingesting root matter, where they can just take it and take six to twelve to thirty grams at a time. What we do is we take, take it, measure it out, put a hundred-and-twenty grams up in the top, three gallons of water, and percolate out that kratom, so they're not even ingesting all that plant matter, it's going to make them sick or whatever, so people are really enjoying it down there. Ever since we've opened up that Kava bar down there, I've seen probably, I mean, fifty people come in and say, man, I've been sober for three months, this place has been a safe haven for me. And they come in, they're not addicted to this substance, they might come in one, two, three times a week, just like you might go to, you know, your local pub or whatever, and stop in. It's more about seeing the guys. Synergistically, it's all just came together in this area, and it's really doing phenomenal things to everybody in this town that stop in there, they're amazed. We have local passerbyers that just stop in, and they enjoy it. So it's not like they're just coming to, looking for kratom. We're introducing it to new people, and they're looking for ways to deal with their aches and pains and anxieties. And then, I would just like to say in close, that a total ban would kind of defeat what we're doing here in this area with this Kava and kratom bar. I mean, it's really giving people, young people, a place to go, older people, there's people that have been sober for twenty years, now they have a place, go down there, we got a pool table in the back and stuff, got an ambiance set up for people, so they can be actually normal people again, not just be social introverts. So I would, personally, I would recommend, as I had seen on there, that, and the other guy stated, that the state set the regulations, and not just the county here in St. Charles. I appreciate the time, fellas.
Thank you. Thank you.
John Arment?
Thank you, thank you to all of you for taking the time to hear our stories. This is a subject that's very important to all of us. My own personal story isn't unique, it's been told thousands of times across our state. I grew up in a middle-class family, to good parents, and later became addicted to opiates as a young adult. The opiate crisis doesn't have a face, it has millions of them, young and old, and people of every color and social class. I'd wager that there isn't a single person in this room that doesn't know someone who has fallen into opiate addiction. Even if you can't think of that person right now, or would claim that there's no way someone you know would ever touch that stuff, keep in mind that many addicts are able to hide their addiction for years, undetected, or at least unconfronted. Addiction is shameful in our culture, which drives many addicts to hide their addiction at all costs. I hid an addiction for almost ten years, I was very good at functioning, despite secretly wanting help and wanting to change. I was very good at functioning despite secretly wanting help and wanting to change. Like every addict, at some point during use, I was always too scared to ask because I never wanted to let down my family or friends. Help finally came when a close friend of mine saw my desperate circumstances and had the courage to make a call to my family. I would finally get the help I wanted for so long. I gladly entered inpatient rehab facility for the next thirty days and after completing the program, I quickly moved away from all the people that I had networked with that provided me with all the drugs my paycheck could afford. I moved to St. Louis to be away from them and closer to my family. The next few years actually went by pretty well, right up until my girlfriend at the time pointed out that she knew the guy that just moved in next door from high school and happened to mention that he was a heroin addict. Despite knowing my decade-long love affair with opiates, I was able to avoid them for several months, right up until the moment, right up until I had a moment of weakness and I walked up and asked him if he could help me out. He was happy to. It meant more money in his pocket so that he could buy more heroin. This pattern of helping each other out went on for about two and a half months and it cost me about four thousand dollars. Plenty of time in heroin for me to know when, that when it was time to stop, the withdrawal was going to be absolute hell. I finally wised up, told my girlfriend what I was dealing with and promised to stop, cold turkey on a Thursday afternoon of a four-day weekend. It would be just enough time to get through the worst part of the withdrawals before returning to work on Tuesday. This time I wanted to try something new. I had heard that there was a plant from Southeast Asia that might help. It was a plant that I had tried a handful of times before, years earlier, to help with pain and muscle soreness. It was called kratom. That Thursday, I laid down for what I thought would be my last night of decent sleep for the next week and a half. I woke up early the next morning, starting to feel both hot and cold, sweaty, achy, anxious, and starting to feel queasy. It was time to give kratom a shot. I took it right after waking up and settled back into bed to greet what I thought was going to be my best impression of a QT roller dog, tossing and turning until the fitted sheet broke away from the mattress, damp as a sink rag. What actually happened, however, was something different. I fell back asleep and slept peaceful as any night I have ever had.
Mr. Chairman, the three minutes are up.
Motion for him to continue.
Yeah, let's let him continue. Keep on.
I fell back asleep and slept as peaceful as any night I have ever had. Woke up a few hours later feeling a little tired but otherwise fine. I was dumbfounded. I thought, well, it helped me sleep a little bit longer on, on the first day, but I really put this plant, I'll really put this plant to the test on the third day. For myself, the third day is historically the peak point of agony during opiate withdrawals. The third day came across, I was awfully lethargic but otherwise fine. I was an achy, sweaty, queasy, or anxious, but I was relieved that I was none of those things. For the first time, I was going through opiate withdrawal, able to sleep for more than five minutes. The weekend passed and I went into work that Tuesday. The day went fine. I was having a little trouble focusing on staying and staying on task, but no worse than one or two beers too many the night before. As the week wore on, it turned into the weekend and all withdrawal symptoms had passed and I was back to my old self again. I could not have been happier, although I could tell my girlfriend was a little annoyed by all of this. I think she wanted me to suffer a little more than I did. She's now my ex-girlfriend. This, this most recent brush with opiates happened about two and a half years ago and I am happy to say that I haven't touched heroin or any opiate since. Kratom has been a blessing in my life and so many others. In society today, we need to face the fact that opiates really are in epidemic proportions. Life is hard and people are turning to drugs like alcohol and prescription medicine to find some sort of relief. These substances are great for solving people's problems after it's created them. So people will continue to use them until it becomes so uncomfortable that it can't be ignored. The methods we are using to treat drug abuse has had some success, but let's be realistic. Thirty days in inpatient rehabilitation costs five to twenty-five thousand dollars. Even after insurance, the out-of-pocket deductible is still at least six thousand. And let's not forget the cost of prescriptions they write people to help them sleep and curb their depression. The prescriptions I receive just, cost just under six hundred dollars a month for only two of them. These expenses are far out of the reach of a person whose financial health is already in shambles due to addiction. It's not realistic, it's not a realistic solution for the majority of people who need help. And let's not forget, rehab centers have about a twenty percent success rate after five years. Should I keep going?
Well, we got a...
Yeah, a few more, yeah.
That's all right.
But no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah McGinley?
I just have a story to tell. I have prayed for many years for my grandson and my son to be able to get off of heroin, Vicodin, Percocet, all the synthetic drugs. Whenever we found out about kratom, it was my oldest son who told us. He had been taking it for four years. For probably twenty years, he had taken painkillers, Vicodin, Percocet, Oxycontin, because he was in a car wreck and hurt his back, continuously in pain. He started using the kratom and he told me about it, probably about four years ago. And I was skeptical because when someone's a heroin addict or a drug addict or they're hooked on painkillers, you're skeptical of what they tell you. But he came to visit about a year ago and he told me, Mom, you need to try this for your pain. I have fibromyalgia. I have sciatica. I have pinched nerves in my neck and in my lower back. So I tried it. It does not give you a high. It doesn't do anything like that. It relaxes you enough that you feel good so you can work your way through the pain. It doesn't get rid of pain, but it masks it. I also have a grandson who was a heroin addict. And it had not been for kratom, I don't think he would have been with us now. Many, many times, he was rushed to the hospital, not breathing. So I am against the ban and I just hope that everyone can understand that this is not something that should be shoved under the rug or should not be considered for people who are in pain. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Holly Jones?
I kind of have two stories. That's my mom that was just up here speaking. So in 2011, I personally was diagnosed with breast cancer. I'm sorry. I dealt with a lot of pain. And when my brother, her oldest son that she was talking about, told us about kratom, I tried it. And for the first time in years since being diagnosed, I slept all night, no pain. I was able to get a full night's sleep. It worked wonders for me. I take it every day. I'm a single mom and I have to work a full-time job. So I follow doctors around all day. If I didn't have this kratom, I couldn't do that. I wouldn't be able to. Her grandson that she's talking about is my son. We almost lost him several times. And the last time, I said enough. I don't care what we have to do. I will do whatever. It will go to the ends of the earth. We will find something, something. I will ship you somewhere and I will lock you up if that's what I have to do. So when he tried kratom, they had him on Suboxone. And, you know, some people, Suboxone works for, others it doesn't. It didn't stop those cravings. But when he tried kratom, he was like, for the first time in probably ten years, I had my son back. And I've had him back ever since. So, you know, as far as if it were to be banned, I can deal with the pain. I dealt with it for years before I found kratom. But if it's taken away, I don't know what my son's going to do. And like my mom said, I don't want to lose him. And I'm afraid these days, if it's taken away, I may have to bury him and I don't want to do that. So I just ask that you guys hear everybody out and do your research. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Osterberg?
I think I'm going to skip it. I think everybody's got everything.
Okay. Nicole Kleba?
I've known Dakota and Holly for a really long time, so when, when I was a kid, I watched my mom be diagnosed with fibromyalgia and they started putting her on pain medications. And eventually she became used to that pain. And so they prescribed her more, Oxycontin, Percocet, more and more. By this time, I've moved out, had my own kids of my own. And sometimes I'd take the kids over and I'd show up and my mom would be sleeping in the chair with a cigarette, burning a hole in her clothes. And it was because of her fibromyalgia. And all the doctors would do is just keep prescribing her more and more and more. Now, my mom eventually died of cancer, so I don't have her around. In 2015, I used to competitively skate, made third in region. I still cycle today, but my body hurt, constantly hurt all the time. I always checked for MS, lupus. Eventually they prescribed, they diagnosed me with fibromyalgia, same as my mother. They wanted to prescribe me Lyrica. It was the first new drug that was on the market for fibromyalgia. Told me it was safe, it was okay, it might gain a little bit of weight. I was like, okay, let's try this. I never felt more loopy in my entire life and eventually gained eighty pounds. And every time I tried to quit it, it felt like my bones were coming out of my skin. And so I would just take more because I didn't want to feel that pain. I found out about kratom and decided to start taking it and was able to stop taking Lyrica. I competitively skate. I competitively do cycling. I am working on losing the hundred pounds that the Lyrica, my doctor prescribed me, to take off. I do not take anything else. I refuse to. I watched my mom deteriorate because of the opiates that they were prescribing her constantly. And I refuse to become what my mom was. And so when I see that kratom is being taken off the market, all I think about is, what am I going to do about my pain? Because honestly, if you don't know about fibromyalgia, what it is, is it's the central nervous system. It's basically your body attacking itself and you feel like you have basically bruises all over your body. You want to sleep all day. Sometimes, I have six kids, so sometimes my kids jumping on me hurt. So kratom allows me to do that. Sometimes I take maybe small amounts of milligrams. And actually, kicking it with Kava, I've been there a few times. It's really a nice place to be able to... Oh, I'm sorry. It's a nice place to go to, to know that there's other people around that deal with this. But I don't want to turn into my mom. I don't want to turn into, because we're not outlawing the opiates. And I don't want to be in pain, but I also don't want to turn into my mother, where I'm sitting there tired and sleeping and I can't function in life. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last speaker.
Okay. Any other speakers on the other topic?
No.
Okay. Moving on to the oral presentation.
Oh, yeah. Simon has a presentation.
For, for all those folks who are here for what we were just talking about, we will be having a work session on the next, is that down on, when is that?
May twen-, Tuesday, May twenty-eighth.
Tuesday, May twenty-eighth at six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Okay.
Unless you think you want a different time.
No, I mean, if that's, that's what it's set for, so we won't, we will, we will be tabling the bill tonight, so there really won't be any further discussion. And it's a D and a J and I'm just telling you so you don't want to sit through a boring meeting, but you're welcome to.
But Simon, it's pretty entertaining.
So I mean, if you want to go, you can, but if you don't, that's fine, too. I'm just letting you know.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll go for a minute. It's fine.
You have written testimonies. There's some...
Yeah, I have some.
You can put them in, too. I can put a bunch of them in.
How many should we present?
Two.
Two.
Go ahead, Simon.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to explain a couple of items on the agenda today that IT has in front of you. It really revolves around Microsoft licensing. And just to give you some background on Microsoft licensing, we signed three-year contracts with Microsoft to purchase their products. The last time we signed it was 2016. It expires at the end of May this year. And in front of you is the renewal to go the, the next three years with Microsoft. There's, there's multiple components with Microsoft. There's the desktop and the server licensing and it includes Windows and Office 365. Office 365 is the cloud version of Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint that we use. And then you also pay Microsoft for the Windows licensing that runs on every desktop in the county, right? While we're evaluating which level of licensing to purchase from Microsoft, the county also has in front of it multiple high-priority projects related to security. This is just a listing of some of the projects. And the first one is the Azure migration, which is the second item on your, on the agenda, the second IT item on the agenda. And then the ones on the bottom all relate to Microsoft licensing somehow. Microsoft, I don't know if it's intentional or unintentional, makes this very complicated to try and understand what it is you should be buying from them. So they come in different flavors, they come with different features thrown onto them. You have to evaluate whether buying the bundle is cheaper than buying each of the individual components separately. And to evaluate which components we need, we need a little more time than we have in front of us today. So what we're actually recommending is to continue purchasing Microsoft at the same levels that we have purchased the last three years. But to prepare you that after we're done with the evaluation of what we need from a security perspective, we may have to come back to council and ask for additional approvals. Okay?
Questions?
Go ahead. Since the technology's changing and since unfortunately, I think you're leaving and I hate to hear that, and we, you know that, my feelings on that. Is there an option to, to, to do this contract instead of three years to maybe one year and then give the new incoming IS/IT director an option to change any of this? Should they, they choose a different direction than we're currently under? That's the question I would have.
I have not raised that possibility with Microsoft. I think the answer is no, but I don't have a definite answer from them, that that is not possible.
Okay. If we say, if we've signed the three-year, and let's say it's a year from now, we want to go a different direction, is there, do we have the right to cancel portions of that? Like a pay and go, as a pay, for instance, a pay and go, a pay-as-you-go type arrangement in the contract?
Yes. So I know you can step up licenses. And I think you can also change if there's a business-related event where you went from a thousand employees to eight hundred employees, they're going to allow you to do that. I am not absolutely sure about changing the license type from one, one type to the other.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, you know, we're, we have a little bit of a financial crisis in this county. We're spending more than we've taken in the last three years. Our reserves are going to run out in about another three. So let's say if we have to cut back from the eleven hundred employees we have now to eight or nine hundred, we don't need all those licenses, are we still going to be paying them two, three years down the road appropriately? Okay? Thank you.
Yeah. In that case, I'm ninety-nine percent certain that we can cut down on the licenses. I'm not sure about changing the licenses midway because we changed our mind, right?
Okay.
But so, I, I think the, the thing to clarify with them would be, can I do a one-year contract? Which I think most of these are three-year enterprise agreements. That's the Microsoft standard and the county's main investment in Microsoft, so we kind of have to go along with it.
Right.
We're also leveraging the state of Missouri pricing for all of this, so we don't have to negotiate with Microsoft.
I know we've bought a lot from Worldwide Technologies before.
Yes.
Is, is, did we get a bid from them as well? Are they a Microsoft distributor as well?
They are a Microsoft distributor. The prime vendor contract holder for the state of Missouri switched from worldwide to SHI, which, so SHI actually holds the contract and SHI sells everybody who leverages the state contract, Microsoft products.
But would there be a possibility that Worldwide Technology would come through with a lower price?
Probably not because by going with the state, it allows us to be at the level of depricing, which is the maximum discount that Microsoft gives to any government entity.
Okay. Okay.
Councilor Corning, if I can mention one more thing, in terms of changing the licenses, what we're proposing to you today, while it is a three-year contract, will allow us to change the licenses in the likely direction that we are going a year from now. And Simon was correct, I want to make sure you catch, that if we have a change in the number of employees at any time, Microsoft will absolutely bill us for what we're using. Whether it's more employees tomorrow or less employees, those licenses get tied to what we're using. So I, I think we've got the protections in terms of needing to make a change.
Councilor Cronin, if I could mention one more thing, in terms of changing the licenses, what we're proposing to you today, while it is a three-year contract, will allow us to change the licenses in the likely direction that we are going a year from now. And Simon was correct, I want to make sure you catch, that if we have a change in the number of employees at any time, Microsoft will absolutely bill us for what we're using. Whether it's more employees tomorrow or less employees, those licenses get tied to what we're using. So, I think we've got the protections in terms of needing to make a change in a year that we need. And we're certainly not just, like, probably moving to, like, Google Docs tomorrow and going to everything instead of using any Microsoft suite. So, I think we're well-covered on that front.
It's only a hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
I know, you like it.
You, that was coming, didn't you? I want to thank you for the way you've always taken technical matters like this and made it, took the time to explain it to, and matters old guys like me can understand. And I want, you know, I also want to tell you that, you know, the only concern I ever had was cost of everything.
Sure.
I know you've done a fine job in your, in your years here, I really appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
I have another question about the other information technology.
Do you want to go through his presentation?
Are we got more to go?
I have more detail, if you want to hear the detail, I don't have to step through it.
Budget component, at least make sure we cover that.
This is the important part to me.
Okay.
Okay. So, on the left-hand columns, the last, the two left columns are 2016 to 2019, what we spent, and then 2019 through 22 is what is in front of you right now. Right? So, for the desktop and server licenses, we paid a total of 1.2 over the last three years. This ask is 1.5 million going forward. And the Azure Cloud project, which I've talked to you multiple times about, we paid about 1.4 the last three years, and we're planning to step up, step up that spend to 2.8. Again, this is some transfer of costs between running our own data center and using Microsoft as the data center, right? By moving into the cloud. 2016, if you look on the left-hand column near the bottom where it says Azure, there was a ninety-nine thousand dollar proof of concept that we did to make sure we could actually run our applications in the cloud. And so, that's why that spend was a little lower. If you look at the right-hand side, we're projecting that cloud costs are approximately nine hundred and thirty-six thousand a year, which multiplied over three years takes you up to 2.8.
Gets up there in a hurry.
Yeah. So, what, to summarize this table, what were our costs, average cost per year, like, currently versus what it's going to be in nineteen to twenty-two?
So, today, if you look at the last year's costs, I would look in the annual column on the left-hand side where it says years two and three, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, a half of that is about four hundred and sixty thousand. And we're actually going up to five hundred and nineteen thousand. Because included in some of that is additional server licensing that we buy for the applications that we run. So, as the server licensing goes up for databases and for servers to run it, you still pay those costs to Microsoft, whether you're running it on our hardware or hardware in the cloud.
And you've got about another million a year for the Azure, the cloud?
For the cloud, right.
Is that paid annually? Is that divided? Or is that paid all upfront?
It's paid annually.
Simon, can you also comment a little bit about how this compares with what you budgeted? And how, and that it's within budget?
Sure. So, these costs are actually already appropriated in the capital budget. I'm sorry. So, we had about 1.1 million for the cloud costs already in the capital budget. And for the desktop licensing, we had four hundred and forty-five thousand, close to that four sixty I talked to you about, that we were spending year over year. And we had actually put in more monies than we needed to cover us for the SQL licensing that Microsoft changed in the middle of the contract. Right? So, we knew we had purchased more applications and implemented more software for different departments. We just weren't sure how that licensing would fall out. So, we had put in some contingency in the budget to cover for that event.
Will we eventually save money by going to the cloud versus operating around data
I think we'll be cost-neutral moving into the cloud. In fact, it might be slightly more expensive to run into the cloud, but the advantages that the cloud gives you as opposed to running your own data center are not even close to trying to do it yourself.
Refresh our memory and tell us the advantage of the cloud again.
So, by, by moving to the cloud, you're trusting that Microsoft can do a better job standing up hardware resources than we can, right? So, we have enough, we have enough people trying to do that and keep us up to date. And, and you know, we don't have extra staff, right? So, instead of tasking our staff, we're trying to buy equipment, put it in the data center, predict how much we will use over the next three years to five years to depreciate those capital costs over. By switching into the cloud, you just pay for what you use. If you need the server today, you turn it on. If you don't need it tomorrow, you can turn it off, right? Microsoft's betting that you're going to just turn on more and more servers and keep paying them more. But it gives you the scalability, you could turn on a hundred servers tonight if you wanted to. It gives you agility, the speed, the ability to move faster, and gives you a little better security, right? In order to maintain disaster recovery, we had to run a separate data center in Kansas City. We actually just shut that down earlier this year because we were having traction moving into the cloud. So, we are comfortable with some of the recovery capabilities in the cloud, but we elected to shut down the data center, so there's some cost avoidance there, not running our own data centers and sending people up there on a two-day trip to do stuff in the data center. So, there are those advantages that you have in the cloud that you wouldn't have trying to do it all yourselves.
Are you concerned at all that some hacker from a foreign country can get in there and blow up the Microsoft cloud and we lose all the sensitive data we have?
There is, there's always that minor possibility. I think I'm more confident that Microsoft is doing a better job watching all that stuff than we have time to dedicate to staying on top of all those, in addition to everything else that the county is trying to do.
Is any backup at all, other than the cloud, though? I mean, do we have anything in disk drives or anything like that?
Sure. We still do backup in the cloud. So, even though our data's in the cloud, and Microsoft actually gives us some disaster recovery capability, if they lose a data center, a meteorite hits it, they will stand up our equipment somewhere else. That could take a few days to stand up, right? Depending on where Microsoft moves it. But in addition to that, we also do daily backups in the cloud. So, we're actually capturing our data and storing it at a different location.
Thank you.
So, I'll go.
The other one is the Covenant, we have two separate items, right? That's the, the company that's helping us move into the cloud, which we've been trying to do for a couple of years. And that is also covered in the budget. Those monies are already appropriated or tagged for this migration.
I have a question on that one, too. I read in the details on this, it was in the packet, that one of the reasons we have to do this $225,000 contract is because the system architect that was our guy that was doing that.
Correct.
Was, is left, okay?
Correct, yes.
So, looks, as a business guy, would look at, well, either I spend $225,000 with other company to get this tact, this task done.
Correct.
Or maybe I'm smarter to spend $225,000 for a new system architect, then I could continue on to do other stuff. So, has that person been rehired? And if we did rehire a new systems architect, could they do the job that this company's doing for 225,000?
So, we have refilled the position. But if you remember the slides I showed you in terms of all the other security-related projects that we're working on, right? They're trying to spend time on all of those projects also. So, the architect was very familiar with it. He was a very good, very smart young man, designed it himself with the help of Microsoft. And was very familiar because he built it all on his own. This company, Covenant, has actually come in and helped modify the design a bit. And we did a proof of concept with them, phase one of it, where they showed us the process to move, to move a subset of about ten servers into the cloud.
So, essentially, your, your system architect now's got so many other tasks to do.
Correct.
Doesn't have time to do this.
Correct.
And that's why you're doing with the outside vendor.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I need.
Okay.
Any other questions for Simon?
Good. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you, Simon.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that it, Jennifer, for the oral report? Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Yes, Mr. Cronin?
I would like to talk about the highway and, and transportation portions of the consent agenda.
Okay. So, highways being removed from the consent agenda?
And transportation.
And transportation?
Yep.
And transportation?
Yep.
Okay. Any other items?
Motion for approval on that. Or do you want to wait? We'll approve it later.
Maybe make a motion for, as amended, go ahead and...
Well, we can probably get his back in again.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. You want to do a highway first? Okay?
Yeah. Craig, you want, Craig?
Yeah. If you feel mine, Craig.
Council Chair Bresel.
Yes.
We had Councilmember Cronin made a motion to remove those items from the agenda.
All those in favor?
Did we get a second?
Yeah, yeah, second. Mike, do I got to do a, all those in favor or not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they're removed from the agenda.
And then you approve that the consent agenda is modified?
We did not, not yet, no.
Okay.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and talk about these and see what we're going to take out.
Right.
My question, I guess, when I was looking at those bids, is most of these, these are sealing bids, okay? Most of them only got two responses on, and one, we only got one response from a vendor out of Texas, okay? I remember years ago as a kid, the county used to have those big tanker trucks with the sprayers on the back. I guess you don't do any sealing ourselves anymore?
Well, that, that sealing really doesn't work. I mean, it's, it's like your driveway sealer. I mean, it just, the, the world of asphalt is modernizing, just like everything else. And there's new technologies coming out. And the reason I think that we're seeing less bidders on, on these individual types of treatments is because everybody's working on a new technology, much like the cell phones, you know, five or 10 years ago, there was flip phones, there was sliders, there was, everybody was trying to figure out, you know, what's, what's the niche? What's the right thing to, to make? And because there's a high, you know, capital cost involved in switching over to this type of work, instead of just laying down two inches of new asphalt every 10 years, which is what everybody used to do, these new technologies now allow you to do a whole lot more work for a lot less money. But everybody's kind of working on a different product. So, we're, like everyone else, trying to figure out, okay, what's the right use for these different products? These contractors are trying to figure out, okay, where's my niche in the industry? And so, they're all working on different things. And that's why we're getting limited bidders. If we bid, if we bid just asphalt, as you guys know, we get six or seven bidders every year because that's what everybody's geared up, equipment-wise, and, and, you know, they're able to do that. Regarding the one that we got, the one bidder on, that's actually owned by a St. Louis company. Missouri Petroleum owns innovative, innovative roadway. They say they're in Texas, but that's just their branch, that, that one branch of the company, the way their corporate, corporation is set up, they list that as their home office. But it's owned by Missouri Petroleum, who is on Woodson Road here in St. Louis. And in fact, they've got one of these other projects themselves, so. We did, we did have, on that, on that particular type of work, we did have a different contractor two years ago who usually bids on this, but as Joe recalls, they ran into some issues out on Schlesberg Road with some of the residents and their vehicles and things. And they have not been responsive to the residents and, and taking care of those things. So, I think they decided not to bid because they knew that we were not happy with them and probably wouldn't recommend it accepting them anyway. So, that's one of the reasons why that one has one less bidder than maybe we normally would have. The costs that we've got are, on that particular contract are comparable. In fact, it's only one cent higher than it was two years ago per square yard to do that work. It's actually about a dime higher than it was last year to do it. But it's still, it's cheaper than what our second and third bidders were last year on that type of work. So, I'm not sure why we didn't get more bids, but I think the bid that we got is a capable company that's got a local presence and the price isn't that far out of, out of what we would expect.
You know, it's, it's a million bucks if you add these all up. And I know it's a lot of miles of road, but, I mean, there's probably a lot of new technology, but I think down the road, you'll ever look at, you know, the county being able to use this type of technology themselves, or is it not cost-effective?
I just think it's so specialized. You know, I mean, like everything else, you know, we don't make our own asphalt. We have to buy that from people. We have the equipment to lay it. But that's because, you know, that industry's been doing that for years and years and years. We, they, this, this type of thing may kind of consolidate down to one or two types of work that, that is the best way to go. And the equipment may be something that we can afford to purchase ourselves and do. I think we'll still be buying product just because, you know, it's not cost-effective for us to own an asphalt plant or a quarry or, or something like that, because we just don't use enough material ourselves. But, you know, I think, I think things will consolidate, and then more and more contractors will get into that line of work as they start to see what, what works and what, you know, what technology proves to be the most cost-effective and that kind of thing. So, hopefully, you know, five years from now, we'll get six or seven bidders on this type of work, just like we do on asphalt.
Okay. That's all I got.
Craig, on this, that you brought it up, the Schlesberg, are they, and your spec, does it require traffic control?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, you guys could, because they were, they didn't have any, and you know that, that's why the car's got ruined, so...
Well, I think what happened is, this type of work, that operation gets spread out a long way, you know, it's, it's sealing, so you're moving down the road pretty fast. And you've got driveways along these roads, and it's, it's very difficult to have either a person or a sign at each driveway. And so, you know, most people, when they pull out, if they see something that looks like, hey, there's something going on on that lane, they will stay out of it, but not everybody notices it. You know, some people just drive in and didn't realize what they've done. So, it's, it's hard to account for every possible instance, and contractors know that. And that's why most of them will get with the property owner and work out some deal to, you know, clean their car or whatever it is might be. For some reason, this company decided that they weren't going to play ball with these folks, and, and for that reason, we probably will not recommend using them again unless they change their tune and start working with these people. But we have kind of tried to tighten that up a little bit and, and requiring, I don't know what we say now as far as signs at each driveway and things, but it's going to be impossible to stop every instance of it, but we hope to cut that.
Well, that, so they didn't even have anybody directing the main event. I mean, they weren't even, it wasn't, it was just, they weren't even, they didn't have any flagman at all, and you know that, but, and that's why they're not back. But I just make sure you guys kind of watch that, because that was bad. Any other questions for, on the, is it transportation, highway, and is it answering both?
No, I have one for transportation, too.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. Thank you, Craig.
Oh, yeah. Hi.
Hello.
I read all this, and it's like $385,000 we're spending right off the bat, and there's another clause in that same contract for another $300,000 down the road for a different exhibit, okay? But I also saw that a lot of this was, was actually a service that we're doing to cities in the county, okay? Some of the cities?
Yes.
And I guess, well, my question is, it's unusual for, at least in the past, for us to spend county tax money directly in support of a city, okay?
Yes.
And for instance, like the little town I live in, I think pretty much anything ever gets done to any of the roads in that town get billed to the town, okay? So, why are we, in times of economic duress, spending 385,000 and maybe another 300,000 down the road, when a lot of that money is going to help the cities?
So, let me first say, the second 300,000 is if we choose to do it again. It's just a discounted price if we were to choose to do it again in three years, which we won't. It's just in there because that's part of what they wanted to give us. So, that's that part.
They showed us a different task, but...
It is, it is. It's weird. It's, but it's reinspection contracts, right, pricing. So, yeah, the only, there are some add-ons, but those were things that if the cities wanted to pay for additional things, they could do that. Those are the lower-cost items in Exhibit B. But anyway, as far as the cities, so, we did this five years ago as a road board application that St. Charles submitted. So, the county paid 80% of it, and it was done county-wide on county roads, on city roads, on everybody, but the city of St. Charles handled the contract.[1705.11] on everybody, but the city of St. Charles handled the contract. So, this time, instead of going through the extra step of having somebody else administer it and thus just reimburse them, we just decided we would do it, mainly because we're trying to get those performance measures. This way, I will have more access to the data. I'll know exactly what we're getting. I'll know exactly where everybody's roadways rank in the city, or in each city, as far as, you know, whose is the best, whose is, who's doing well, who's not, what roads need to be reconstructed for real. We won't be relying on other data to figure that out.
But I'm speaking for Mike Elam now because he represents Darden Prairie, okay? But why, for instance, would you do this for the city of St. Charles, city of St. Peters, city of O'Fallon, and not Darden Prairie?
Oh, it is. It's all of them.
It's every county?
Yes, yeah.
It's every city in the county?
Every road in the county that's not MoDOT. Yes. Those ones are just county road maintained, so they were just tabulated into that number. Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Because the paperwork doesn't say. So, this is countywide, small cities, big cities, every city?
Yes, everybody.
Okay, so everybody, and it's used at road, primarily road board money?
Yes.
So, it's taxes the entire county paid to help the entire county? I'm good with it.
Yes.
But when you read the documents, it doesn't come out that way?
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yes, sorry, I appreciate your question.
No problem.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yes, John.
One thing that's unique about this, and we did this five years ago, and one thing that occurred five years ago is that we had a lot of our cities come in and say, we should use our county transportation sales tax for maintenance. We said, no, it's a capital improvement tax. We build roads, we'll help you reconstruct roads if you properly maintain them. Well, how do you know if they properly maintain them? And so, five years ago, what we did is, we had a company, and it's TransMaps, drive every road in the county. Everything from your subdivision street that gets you near your house, the collector road, and the archero road. And that gave us a baseline of what the conditions of our roadways were. Were they good, poor, or great? This is that check five years from now. And so, we'll be able to use that then to value, when a city comes to us and say, hey, we want money to reconstruct this roadway. We'll have then that baseline measurement, and now a secondary measurement, determine whether that roadway is basically wearing the way that it should, is it getting properly maintained? Because that's, Craig mentioned, that the maintenance activities that these cities are doing, it's changing. It's not just a two-inch overlay everywhere. It's not just tearing our concrete straight out. There's a lot of new products out there that help us extend the life of these pavements, and that's why this is essentially that county-wide check.
I'm good.
Okay, any other questions? What, John, real quick, since we're talking about roads, that Defiance 94 still flooded, been flooded for six months now, and MoDOT's still not doing anything, right?
Right.
All right. Any other questions? So, you want to put...
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
As, as...
As submitted to us.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good, John. Move forward. Moving on with item, final bills for final passage.
Bills for final passage, Bill Number 4709, an ordinance amending sections 500.150, 500.300, 500.310, 500.520A, 500.600A, and 500.880 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, related to building codes and the building commission.
Any questions on 4709? Seeing none, Donna?
An ordinance amending sections 500.150, 500.300, 500.310, 500.520A, 500.600A, and 500.880 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, related to building codes and the building commission. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam? Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander? Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Bill 4709 is passed. Moving on to 4710.
Bill Number 4710, an ordinance amending Chapter 625 Plumbing Contractors and On-Site Sewer Disposal Contractors. Chapter 626 Third-Party Inspectors of Wells and of, of Wells and of Private or On-Site Sewer Disposal Systems. Chapter 630 Electrical Contractors. Chapter 632 Pool Installers. Chapter 633 HVACR Contractors. Chapter 635 Explosives Code, Section 635.080, 635.140, and 635.150, and creating a new Chapter 627 On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Installer Business License, and a new Chapter 637 Blasting Contractor License of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO.
Any questions or concern on 4710?
I just have a comment. I want to thank our Director of Building Code Enforcement, Mr. AG Ferrer. His hard work here, this was something that I had thought about doing years ago when I was the director, and I'm glad to see it's finally getting done, that there's a uniformity in our licensing and everything else, and it, it was a lot of hard work to get to this point, so, thank you very much.
Good job, Jared. All right, any questions? That's it? Go on, Donna.
Bill Number 4710, an ordinance amending Chapter 625 Plumbing Contractors and On-Site Sewer Disposal Contractors. Chapter 626 Third-Party Inspectors of Wells and of Private or On-Site Sewer Disposal Systems. Chapter 630 Electrical Contractors. Chapter 632 Pool Installers. Chapter 633 HVACR Contractors. Chapter 635 Explosives Code, Sections 635.080, 635.140, and 635.150, and creating a new Chapter 627 On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Installer Business License, and a new Chapter 637 Blasting Contractor License of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam? Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander? Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White? Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Am I supposed to announce that, Mike?
You can.
Blues are up by one. All right, moving on, 4710 passed. Moving on to 4711.
Bill Number 4711, an ordinance approving execution of cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County in the cost of the commission's public improvement for I-70 in St. Charles County, which includes mowing and litter pickup along I-70 from the Warren County Line to the Missouri River, Job Number WMSCF18Q.
Any questions or concerns on 4711? Seeing none?
An ordinance approving execution of cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County in the cost of the commission's public improvement for I-70 in St. Charles County, which includes mowing and litter pickup along I-70 from the Warren County Line to the Missouri River, Job Number NUPMSCF18Q. Councilmember Elam? Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander? Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White? Councilmember Cronin?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes. That bill has failed?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Bill 4712.
Bill Number 4712, an ordinance waiving liquor license fees for certain concessions, operations of the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of St. Charles for the period July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020.
Any questions or concern on 4712? Seeing none?
An ordinance waiving liquor license fees for certain concessions, operations of the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of St. Charles for the period July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander? Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White? Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel? Councilmember Elam?
4712 has passed. Moving on to 4713.
Bill Number 4713, an ordinance adopting out of the annual back-to-school sales tax holiday.
Any questions or concerns?
Donna? Do we need to table this until we have a full council, or it's awkward when we have four people?
Make a motion.
It has a time limit on it.
Yes.
I believe, we may have to check with Mr. Schnur, but I believe it has a timeframe.
It has to be approved 45 days before the start of the holiday, so you have, I think, two meetings that you could act on this.
Two meetings? Two more meetings that we could act?
Okay.
Motion to table until the next meeting.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, then table, moving on to 4714.
Bill Number 4714, an ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, concerning the personnel administration plan adopted by ordinance 18-121 by amending the pay grade assignment for the Director of Information Systems.
Any questions or concerns? Donna?
An ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, concerning the personnel administration plan adopted by ordinance 18-121 by amending the pay grade assignment for the Director of Information Systems. Councilmember Hollander? Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White? Councilmember Cronin?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam? Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, 4714. You could have given us a heads up.
Well, I had the last meeting.
Huh?
I did last meeting.
All right, well, okay. 4714 has failed. Moving on to bills for introduction.
Let me slow down for a second. What is the procedure to take it up again at the next meeting? Or is that, do we have to reintroduce it? What would be the procedure if we wanted to...
Well, the bill's been defeated, so, there, I would have to, I want to check on this before...
Is there a timeframe that we can reintroduce it?
There could be a mechanism where a, someone make a motion that moved, that was on the prevailing to change and bring it back up, but...
There's no provisions the night of the meeting? I was under the impression that there was.
I think that's what he was just telling you. Councilman Cronin alone, because he voted, and then he's the prevailing side, even though there's only one vote and a negative, could move to bring it back up. Otherwise, you're going to have to reintroduce it.
Just reintroduce it, Mike. I mean, you can't, you're going to twist his arm? What are you going to do? I mean...
I mean, I brought up, I brought up the reasons why I voted for no and both, just so you know. For instance, on the I-70 mowing?
The trash...
Yeah, we're paying to mow a MoDOT federal interstate. I think that's wrong. We're already paid, they're already mowing it twice. We're paying it, do it, do it two more times. We're spending more than we're taking in. We got to start cutting corners somewhere. The other thing is, maybe when the folks see the weeds on the side of the highway, they'll realize MoDOT's out of money, tell their state legislators to put a pure fuel tax back in the ballot again. That was the reason I voted no for that. And this last one, I understand the marketplace with IT because I got a son in IT, but we got to start living within our means, and we spent more money than we've taken the last three years. I asked for some additional information on the budget last time. I didn't get it, so, I mean, be frank with you, anything that I see in the budget from here on out that looks like it's going to be, that is discretionary in any manner, I'm going to vote no until I see that we've got, we've got...
I don't deny your right to do that.